Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It is May 11th, and I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. We have one item on our agenda this evening. We are going to call the order, open the meeting. We will have time for public comment if there's anybody here for that. And our one item on the agenda is the superintendent evaluation, which we are doing this evening in a special meeting to make sure that all current members of the school committee are guaranteed an opportunity to weigh in on the evaluation. So I will take attendance and just make sure you all are okay with the order of business. I forwarded you just now the copy of the evaluation, but I'll be sharing the results with you shortly. Kathy?
Here, and yes.
Thanks, Paul.
Erin, yes.
Thank you. Mark?
Erin, yes.
And I do not see Erin. But I will ask if there's anybody here who would like to offer public comment. Mr. DeSoni, I see your hand up, and all you need to do is unmute yourself, please. And then you have up to three minutes to share with us what you'd like us to know this evening.
Good evening, school committee people. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
All right. I have announced on my own to say to the school committee. This house has got homebound vaccinated.
Woo hoo.
Yes.
Yeah, me and my dad, me and my dad last Thursday got vaccinated. Got the Moderna, and June 4th is the second one.
That's wonderful news. Congratulations.
Figured to the to the school command and all it caused. How it's been with the vaccinations and how it is with the school system is a long way. But then again, you can see a light at the end of the tunnel coming.
Indeed.
And I want to say, was it next week, I think it is, to Mark Terry and Kathy Kathy there. Good luck in the elections next week.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Because I know whoever's going to take the seat. It's going to be an educated, well, well done seat to whoever has it. That's that's cool. That's a scoop on. And to Mr. Adams, I says, stay young, keep the keep the hair going, and you'll be all set. I'm all set.
Do things I can't control, Mark.
All right, folks. I will start by reminding everybody, if there are new folks turning in tuning in this evening about the superintendent evaluation process. It's really a year long thing. It the summer usually we reflect on things and we set some priorities and we do a deep dive. Last year, we missed out on that because of the pandemic, but we certainly stayed connected to each other weekly, pretty much. The fall, we establish goals for the superintendent, and that is a thoughtful process that takes several weeks, if not longer. We come to a series of goals that are district improvement goals or student learning goals or professional practice goals. And we all agree on them, and then those are the goals by which we evaluate the superintendent. In addition to several items on a rubric that cover all the different aspects of a superintendent's daily work. Midway through the year or thereafter, we check in to just let the superintendent know if we are on track with goals. That process occurred. And then at the end of the year, either in May or in June, depending on whether there's an opposed school committee election. We give the superintendent's results. He's got his feedback. It relates back to his compensation and his performance. And these papers get filed with the state. So I will start by reading the findings. Everybody submits their evaluation to the chair. That's the process. And then the chair combines all of the individual evaluations into one evaluation from the committee. And then combines all the written feedback to to voice the feedback of the committee. This evaluation is based on feedback from four school committee members, all of the members that you see here this evening. And it is as follows. So results of the 2020 2021 superintendent evaluation of Jim Adams are as follows. The district improvement goal number one exceeded student learning goal number two significant progress. District improvement goal number three was met. Student learning goal number four significant progress. District improvement goal number five met and significant progress. There are parts of it that still need to be implemented, but the goal is essentially met. The actual list of goals will be, are they on our website, Jim? Yeah, and the evaluation will be in the superintendent's office for anybody who wants to break down all these details about what these goals are. But if I read everything to you on this evaluation form, we will be here all night. And we certainly have gone over the goals earlier in the year when we announced what they would be. As well, there are four standards in different areas of superintendent practice. The rating for standard one was proficient. The rating for standard two was exemplary. The rating for standard three was exemplary. The rating for standard four was exemplary with an overall rating of exemplary. The feedback is as follows, and I will say there was a very, there's several consistent themes coming from all the individuals on school committee, particularly given the year that we've had and the challenges that we've had and the progress that we've made in spite of all that. So despite the uncertainty of how the pandemic would affect us, Jim was able to meet or make significant progress on all of his goals. The 2020 21 school year has provided unprecedented challenges impacting every part of our lives and community. Mr. Adams has led a tremendous effort to provide safe and effective opportunities for learning, teaching, and connections between students and educators. Despite incredible public health and logistical challenges, the district has both maximized in person learning and continued to mature robust remote instruction. As a direct result of Mr. Adams dedication and leadership, Ashland has been a leader for other districts. Any progress on pandemic goals has exceeded expectations. Jim successfully developed and implemented the district's reopening plan in a matter driven by facts, in a manner driven by facts, science, and best interests of students while facing conflicting community interests. Mr. Adams' high expectations, clarity of purpose, understanding of fiscal systems, and development of good working relationships with all stakeholders has helped not only to keep us afloat during this time, but to move the district forward. Progress has been made in the areas of cultural proficiency with the goal of bringing substantive change to practices regarding anti racist education. Continued SEL, social emotional learning, including professional development on trauma informed practices and a staff SEO website. Continued implementation of reading and writing units of study and Lucy Cockens. Tremendous work along with the committee on the Mindes School Building Project. Negotiation of contracts, management and support of his administrative team, and countless hours behind the scenes that most don't hear about. Mr. Adams has the ability to engage in long term planning as well as manage the details of initiatives. The committee understands that many, if not all of the goals we set for the superintendent are long term efforts, including strengthening and expanding our SEL initiative, diversity and hiring, attaining greater cultural proficiency, implementation of new curriculum, and continuous improvement of the academic experience Ashland offers. Mr. Adams has met the committee's expectations for the short term, and the committee continues to support the efforts to stay the course to fully reach all goals. More than ever after the year we've had, we deeply appreciate his efforts and commitment that Mr. Adams has shown to Ashland. So that's the official evaluation, and I will open it up for comments if anybody wants to add anything to that. And then after that, Jim, I know you have some feedback that you want to share about about the year. But I'll start first with committee members if they have anything they want to add.
I'll just, Jim, I'll just echo the theme of the whole, which I fully support. You know, when we started talking more about where we were with goals. To be honest, I think for me, as a few months ago, I kind of had assumed a lot of things had been backburnered. You know, that just there wasn't time with all the other effort to manage COVID to get other things done. And then we started having conversations about where we were with our diversity and equity and anti racism work. And I was thrilled to know that we were really moving forward with that. And certainly, as our conversations have yielded over the last few few weeks, few meetings, whatever they've been, to really see that, that in fact, we have continued to make progress. To me is astounding because, you know, I my sense is that most districts have sort of just said, let's just get through this year, and then we'll pick it up from there. And you've you've been able to move us forward even through a pandemic that has stopped most things in its tracks. So I just want to take a minute to add my voice to Lori's, which I know represents a conglomeration of everybody's thoughts, to express my deep appreciation for all your hard work this year. Even the people who are on the screen were with you Friday mornings, Thursday nights, and a million other times. Probably don't appreciate how much time you've put into keeping the ship sailing for this year. So just add a thank you on to all the substantive comments.
We can't hear you, Paul.
Yeah, this time we really can't hear you.
I don't know why.
He's choked up.
Oh, that's excellent. Yes.
Yeah, that time it actually switched to a microphone that was actually on my laptop that's under my desk. So that's why you couldn't hear me that time. I don't know why. I don't know why I chose that microphone all of a sudden when I unmuted. But no, I'm just, I think we say this, at least I say this every year, that these performance reviews are tough because we set something at the beginning of the year, and then the year never turns out exactly the same way. And this year, it's, you know, in spades, right? It's it's been crazy, and it's tough to take metrics that were set and say, hey, you spent 90% of your time dealing with unimaginable complexities, both logistically, public health, all that other things, with a lot of help from a lot of people. But, you know, it's it's been amazing that we've been able to make the progress that we have and had a successful year all around, as we have, as many days in in person learning as we've had. The just, you know, I hear it from my kids, and I see it a lot of times, the progress that we've been made and the concerns of how far we would we would have regressed, both from an academic perspective, social, emotional, and while there's going to be lots of work to be done there. I think it's looking back on it now, we still have a few weeks left, but it's amazing how successful it's been. And and it's in no small part to, you know, thanks to you, Jim, and and the work that you and the rest of administration have done. So kudos to you for that. And and like I texted Jim when I when I read this, I said, you know, I guess I was a little hard on you because my mind was a little little bit, but it was tough because I know all the work he's done, and it wasn't reflected in in those in those goals and tasks. So but just thank you for the leadership. And and I do think that we've been an exemplar for other districts to follow this year. So very proud of that.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, Mark and Paul, you guys are eloquently have stated it. I concur with all of that. And Jim, really, thanks. Thanks so much. I can't imagine not having your leadership this year. So it is has been an amazing year. So I thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you, Kathy. You know, and I will just add that. You know, as Paul said, you know, this is a process that is we've committed to this evaluation process, and we set goals. And then we evaluate just on a few different standards. And I think there are parts of the valuation that that capture what we're hoping to get across, and all the categories are important. But as everybody's mentioned, we just had a year like no other. And I don't think I would be able to properly convey all of the the hours, the the blood, sweat, and tears, literally. Extra negotiations, extra letters to parents and families. Jim was going into the buildings back in the beginning of the pandemic when nobody was going anywhere. I mean, there's there's a commitment to this district that can't be captured on paper or within the context of these particular goals. And it's not until something like this happens and over, you know, my tenure and all of yours, we've had our crises, right? So you get a little bit of glimpse into how people respond to, you know, something goes wrong with an employee or a shock or something really sad happens with a student or whatever. We've we've been together when we've had to deal with some really difficult things. But this has been, you know, a year plus of not only really difficult things, but difficult things that that nobody anticipated or were prepared for. So, you know, I think, Jim, you you showed even more, you know, who you are and what you're about by by leading us through all this. And in the midst of it all, we were able to make significant progress on and goals that are important to all of us and to all of you watching, I'm sure. And and it's not to undermine, you know, we're saying how great the, you know, the year went from this perspective. We know what a difficult year it's been for students and families on so many different levels. You know, you may not have reached all your own education goals for your children. Or, you know, maybe people lost jobs or we had to give out extra food, and that's sad. And there's a whole number of things that we know have been going on all around us around this this rosy evaluation that we're giving. And that that doesn't take anything away from from that. But but just know that there's so much that that goes on sort of behind the scenes and what it takes to keep this all afloat and get your kids back in school and get them learning to the high standards that we expect from our superintendent. And we expect him to have those same high standards for everybody on his team, and then it trickles down. So I just wanted, again, Jim, to say thank you for just an extraordinary effort this year that that won't really be captured by your evaluation. It looks a lot like they usually do because you're a great superintendent. But 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 this year has really been extraordinary in many ways. And I know it's taken its toll on you, probably in your family and and your administrators and teachers. And there's not a minute that goes by that that we all don't appreciate that. So thank you. I'll stop talking, and I will let you share what it is that you'd like to share.
Okay, thank you. You know, I don't, you know, it's it's hard to always take praise or thanks for actually just doing your damn job, right? So it's that's part of what we do. I'm more proud of Paul calling me a baby earlier today when I had to go in for my MRI, and I'm claustrophobic. I managed to do it and not have an issue with it. So that's that's a that's a big step for me.
Yeah.
So I, this is what I wrote, and I wanted to, and it summarizes, I think, how I felt the year has gone thus far. And we still have 27 days, but also, you know, in relationship to some of the goals. So forgive me, I'll just read this because I wanted to go into the record. Dear Ashland School Committee, this year certainly has been quite the unusual experience. Never in my wildest dreams would I have imagined being a superintendent of schools during a pandemic. To say the challenges our district faced almost on a daily basis since last March would be a gross understatement. However, I do believe we have accomplished much during the year, thanks to the support of each of you or each of you has given me, our faculty, staff, and students. When I look to sum up the 2020 2021 school year, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that our success this year is directly related to the outstanding work our entire staff put in. If I begin to name these members and their accomplishments, I'm afraid I would miss some of them, so I'll not do so. However, it is important to point out that each member of our organization worked to ensure we could provide the highest quality of education for our students. Yes, there were some very trying times, a lot of discomfort, anxiety, and questioning of our process. Yet, as we as an organization banded together in order to provide a safe, effective, and enriching learning environment. As I reflect on the goals we set at the beginning of the year, I know not all of them have been achieved to my satisfaction nor the satisfaction of the committee. However, I also believe that our goals are fluid and will take many years to fully achieve, if that is at all possible. Let me outline how I would grade myself below. Goal one, which in just real quick summary is response to COVID planning in our learning plans. I believe this goal was met throughout the year as we've successfully opened our doors to full in person learning for all students. While at times it's been challenging to stay open, I believe we focused on using proper metrics to keep our students, faculty, and staff safe. So as much in person learning could take place, I'm extremely proud of this achievement. Goal two was the district will gain a better understanding of how to become more proficient in diversity, equity, inclusion, social justice, and anti racism as it relates to implementation of curriculum and organizational professional development. While we've made significant progress at some of our schools, Ashland High School in particular, there's much work to be done in this goal. The district as a whole, and me in particular, need to become more educated on these topics and lead in such a way that shows we are and understand, we are understanding the diverse needs of our students and parents. A great understanding of the challenges our students of color face is needed, and opening up more dialogue with local organizations such as ARIA is paramount for my own education. I would rate this goal as clearly in progress with much work to be done. Goal three, as it relates to professional development on trauma informed practice and integrating SEL into different environments. While I would say that based on how the goal was written, the goal was met. However, there's much more work here to be done as well. While we conducted numerous opportunities for faculty and staff and provided support systems for students and families, there's more to be done. We are fortunate to have Ms. Cutler leading the way, and I fully believe that APS will become a leading district as it relates to trauma informed care and utilization of best practices. Again, an ongoing goal. Goal four, continued professional development in the Lucy Cockens program. During the school year, while as challenging as it was, we continued to provide K5 staff with the necessary professional development to bring this literacy program to life for our students. More work is needed and supplementary programs must be added to fill in gaps that we've identified in Lucy Cockens. Foundations, for example, for phonemic phonemic awareness. In addition to hiring a literacy coach for the district. The goal is ongoing, but significant progress certainly has been made this year. And finally, the communication audit. This goal was met through the use of an outside agent, Donovan Group, who provided a detailed analysis of our communication strategies, successes, and challenges. The school committee will revisit this topic during their next summer retreat. Overall, we continue to set a positive path forward for the Ashland Public Schools. I feel blessed to have a stable and talented administrative team who's fully committed to doing what is best for students. The world is an ever changing place, and as we review the APS blueprint for continuous student improvement, we will need to identify some really high level ways to make Ashland Public Schools the best it can be. As always, thank you for your continued support of me. I'm extremely fortunate to work with a committee that is focused on doing, again, what is best for students. I look forward to our continued working relationship. And that's what I have in terms of my reflection on the year. It's certainly been it's been eye opening. It's been enlightening. It's been a challenge. I think every person who's been involved since last March is in dire need of of a little bit of downtime and family time and time to reflect on what was really positive that can we can pull out of COVID-19 and the structures of our school system. There are many things that we will not go back to doing and many things that, especially from a technology standpoint, where we were able to implement the Chromebooks and Google Classroom, that's going to stay with us forever now. There's going to be that integrated within our, our classes. So it's exciting. But it also shows our deficiency in certain areas, like the lack of technology that is, you think about the, the new high school, and we're 16 years in. And, you know, that technology's failing, and we need to upgrade it and things like that. So, so there are some challenges coming down the pipeline. But overall, certainly proud of all of our educators, our paraprofessionals, our nursing staff, our nutrition, custodial maintenance, the administrators who have worked tirelessly as well to make the year go as smoothly as I think it has. Yes, there were bumps, but overall, pretty smooth. You know, we're, knock on wood, the next round of, of pool testing was done today in a much more efficient manner, for sure. It was better. But let's hope they all come back negative. We got about four weeks to go with it and, and all as well. So thank you for your support and the support of my team, especially.
Thanks, Jim. Any final comments from anybody before? I guess we need a motion to accept the evaluation. But I'll take, if there are any final comments first.
Lori, I just, actually, it was a question on the one, one phrasing. I want to make sure it was correct. It said, any progress on pandemic goals? And I wasn't sure if that was supposed to be pre-pandemic.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mark.
I mean, I think, subject to that, I'll make a motion to approve the evaluation of the superintendent as presented by the chair.
A second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark? And I, for me, that's passes as amended. So thank you for catching that, and that's done. And we'll see you all.
Friday morning.
Friday morning.
Friday morning for the COVID update.
All right, so. Okay. Thanks. Well, that's what I was wondering. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
So you said, I'm just doing that. Second.
Lori, you in black? Are you?
Oh, no. Lori, you still there?
No, she's not.
Looks like she.
I need three of you to close anyway.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Lori, you're frozen. And I, for me, we are adjourned.
See you in about 30 minutes, Paul.
All right.
All right, bye. Thank you.